Do you want me to put something on on these? Okay.
There's nobody watching this. It isn't a date what on this one.
Yeah.
I heard it's fourteen, nothing anyway.
Already?
Yep.
It is.
Who they playing against?
Montana.
All right, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Somebody move your flag.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have two minutes to, I actually just won the last special meeting, which the special meeting was to approve the previous minutes so that we can get it in for the Gerson diversion project. So do I have a motion to approve the minute? Paul makes motion, is there a second? Seconded by Jason, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Did you give this one to me for a reason? Or you're just?
I was gonna ask you a question about that.
Oh.
We'll get to it at the end of the meeting.
We have bills to go over. So any questions on the bills? If not, do we have a motion to approve? Have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved by Jason, seconded by John, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. The November financials, you guys should have got an email on those from Casey. Just have a motion to accept those.
I think motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Nicole, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We'll go on to commissioners' reports. We'll start with Jason tonight.
I don't have anything.
John?
Just real quick, I met with Jay on Friday. Just trying to start process of how we're gonna fix up some of the roads and at what point we maybe be doing a full resurfacing. And Jay's gonna take some of the information I got from A E two S and try to plus some numbers in. We'll get Casey some numbers that we can start setting aside money for that and hopefully a little bit of money for resurfacing once that point comes. Gonna try to figure out what this stuff we bought here last year, see if how long it would last on, especially on that road there by the churches and hospital and schools there, that's a pretty heavy travel road. See how long it'll last on there and that might throw us a better idea, you know, at what point we'd have to do a full resurfacing on that. But one thing that came up, we were looking at gutters now on the storm drains, Nicole, are they doing any gutters on that? That you're aware of?
On which part?
Like on the storm drains? Part that you're working on, is there any thought of doing this gutter at the same time wherever that happens?
Um, we probably should look at it on where it is and where it ends up on that line.
Jay and I kinda discussed that and I just.
Yeah, cause you said you were working with A E two S, so we could check with Steve on that, I bet.
Yeah.
There was some, if I remember right, and then there's some also inlets that need to be upsized and
Yeah.
there's a couple other things. There's, there's a whole list. Should be in that packet that.
That we got.
That you got.
Last meeting.
I think that might have been what Steve emailed me and Jay does have that now as well, so. It was kind of a list of how much there was in Crossable Town back when we did it in, was it twenty nineteen or twenty twenty? When they were kind of trying to see about doing the street wide city project at that point.
Well, there was that map.
Yeah, and it was just completed, what, twenty twenty?
But this is, we're talking about the total. Which you guys should have got a digital copy too. It's the
Good job.
The big packet that
Yeah.
that folder, the binder.
I just showed up today, you got it.
Yeah. It's a PDF he sent me, I think it was just like five, ten pages or something like that.
Right, but it's in that big packet I do it on. At the very end it says, these are what improvements need to happen.
I think that's one thing we need to do before we do the streets is fix the gutters. Cause there's a lot of spots where the water is not draining properly through the storm sewers.
Those kind of what kind of part all top of the streets, Nicole, just trying to get that.
Yeah, so the plan, that's the stuff we're buying and we're hoping we can kind of extend the life a little bit so we, you know, we could storm sewer thing figured out and fixed, get the gutters fixed, you know, hopefully at that point. I don't know if it's gonna be five years, seven years, you know, hopefully. My plan would be to do it in less than ten years.
Yeah, just let me know what air, like what areas and then I can check.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
See if that's part of it.
You wanna, we're talking about gutters, I think it's a pretty big problem all around, you know, some of them are okay, some of them, they're just not draining, which might affect your stormwater plan because now all of a sudden we take all these tiny, you know, pension funds we have around town, start dumping that out on the stormwater drains. Maybe that affects a few.
Right.
But yeah, that's, just wanted to let you guys know I'm working on it, haven't got a solid plan yet, but had kind of ideas like, well, how much is it gonna cost, you know? And what can we do in the meantime until we get to the point where we think we can get it approved?
And with that, I did talk to Tanya to see if she's interested or entertaining the idea about the one over there, especially if we needed it for snow to go there as well if we lose the, our spot over there, and she wasn't at this time, but she said maybe in spring she'd be open to talking again, so.
So yeah, I don't know if you want to touch base with Jason, can you?
Yeah, I will.
I think he mentioned, he said he was trying, I've tried to get ahold of you a couple of times, but.
I think depending upon all this patchwork you're getting, I think you're gonna have to do something before ten years.
Yeah.
And we'll be gonna.
I would not disagree with that.
Right, well, and we just, we may have to bond for it or something, but we have to, we can't wait ten years, we just have to get a plan and then decide what plan we're gonna go with. So.
Right.
I agree.
Okay, anything else? That's it. Paul?
Okay, oh, I don't really have a lot of notifications, of course, you meet next, we meet next Monday again, DDC, nothing, they don't meet till then a month. I'm elected, the guy is right now because of courses, so cold off, you're doing mainly maintenance on the trucks right now, they're doing a lot of updates on the trucks and getting things fixed that probably shouldn't have been fixed before, so they're doing a lot of that and then kind of making plans on things, what they're gonna do, what it does, warm up a little bit. The rate study, from what I understand, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Casey's kind of on hold right now, they're waiting for more information from DGR that's doing electrical plan. Am I correct? So, Roy's bugging them, so hopefully they'll get it sooner than later so we can hit the ground running this spring, so. So, that's all I have at this time.
Nicole?
Uh, I have nothing from the water sewer airport tonight. You want to talk about during your update for handle and stuff? Okay. So, I have nothing.
Okay. In your package should be a proclamation if you guys so choose to go through with that, just thanking Jamie for his Reed, Jamie Reed for his years of service as fire chief. So, need a motion to approve that.
Make the motion to approve.
Moved by Paul, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Nicole, any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. The Planning and zoning meets next week, but we did have a resignation of our extraterritorial zone member, which is Kevin Growthments will be on lookout for another person for that position, and they have to live in our extraterritorial zone. So within a half mile outside of city limits.
That's their, that's their territory, that's where they're located.
That's where they have to live.
That's where they have to live.
Yeah, we have to have, if we are.
A half mile outside?
A half mile, within a half mile outside. You guys' computers came in and the new ones came in, we saved, I think we budgeted for thirty thousand and we stayed under ten thousand and we were able to get computers for all the office staff, the five commissioners, and two for public works. So we saved a bit of it there.
Good job. Good job, whatever you did.
East Central reached out to me and asked about the progress forward on the moving forward the water treatment plant on the other side. Cause they're gonna start that process with the dairy now that the one in Amber Combray has been approved, they'll be working on the permit for up here to get done. And I said, we're waiting on, the biggest thing was electrical rates and I think, I told them, we're still waiting on DGR to get that all finalized before we could give them that exact answer, so. He asked them.
Have they turned in what their requirement, what their needs are to Roy yet, or?
Roy had reached out to him, but I haven't.
You don't be sure?
He's got a list of what they'll be.
He does?
They sent a spreadsheet out for the ball.
Okay. You just recently got that then, or?
Oh, at least three weeks ago.
That's what I had thought, I'd hope he did, so. You'll see also that the school, there will be a request coming in from the school district to ask for four mills of our, so we currently can levy four mills above and beyond what we normally do for a public library, which we already pay for a public library to some extent in the summer, so this would just add in, we can do four mills without having to have a public library board, so all the money would just go through to the school. I did talk to, that's what I talked to JR about was gonna be like a contract for D, not a contract, a contract for services, similar to what we do with the fire department, he said, yep, so then it would be contracted that the school hosts our community library, like I said, we can put that in, it wouldn't be this year's budget, but it would be next year's. But that request probably will be coming, we'll know more on Thursday, but John Dryberg had asked me about that, so. They can go above four, that takes a vote of the people, and then you need a library board and a few other things, similar to what Mayville does, so.
Is it not a community library now?
Yes, it's a public library, I don't think it's.
But it's not a city.
Schools just aren't funding it, so.
Yep. And we've funded in the summer.
So that's how Mayville's is, it's just, it's funded through?
Um, I assume theirs is funded through the city taxes. Or you could have a countywide library, however, but the schools are the ones that has been doing it, so it, but they have it open to the public, so. So you should see that coming eventually. I tried to have good news for you, I had a phone call about a week ago, two weeks ago, two weeks ago. Asking if the community would be interested in a data center and I said, sure. How many jobs? Two hundred. I said, sure, let me see what I can do. Need to say we can't, we don't have enough power. We need two hundred megabyte, or two hundred megawatts of electricity. But just keep that in mind as we are working on plans, those are some things that we might need if we want to do those types of things.
Like similar to one they have down in Ellendale?
Pretty similar. So, I learned this and I didn't know this, but along with the two hundred employees that you'd get through it, there also is a franchise fee, same as we charge for Century Link or any of the other customers in town. The reason that Grant Forks and Fargo and these communities are pushing for it is a four percent franchise fee is what Fargo and Grant Forks are doing. And that'll generate about ten million dollars a year from that data center. Of that size, so. Just some facts of information for you. Other than that, I don't have anything else, so we'll go on to. Zach, do you have anything for us?
I do, I just had a question for you guys, I've been working on water meters lately. John and I was always taking care of water meters, and so there was kind of a gap between when you'd buy, to when I kind of picked stuff up, took it long to kind of get a hammer and stuff, I've been putting in them recently. In that time when the ones that aren't, old starters start to not read, software starts to estimate, which for the most part works pretty well. We ended up with one resident that had a water leak during that time, it was estimated, so about, is in last month, I think, and it was, and then with the updated numbers, he ended up with a pretty large bill to staff, man. Ended up being a toilet that was running, but of course we weren't able to read it, so we weren't able to catch it on our side, he didn't, he didn't know it was on his side. So, it's not, we ended up with a, with a seven hundred dollar water bill. I was just seeing, gonna ask you guys if we're able to work with them at all on that bill. If it's on their side, I guess, cause it's inside the house, but also normally it's something like that, we catch them and let them know. Catch that, so, just seeing what you guys' thoughts are on that.
That's it?
Yes, so you can see, that's the last, like two years of his bills, and then.
The very, the very last number would be, on the second page would be his current.
He goes from an eighty to ninety dollar water bill up to a seven hundred and forty dollar, this, this past month, along with that, the sewer jumped up a little bit too.
Cause before it was estimating it and not.
Yeah, when we can't, so it's a transmitter connected to the meter that sends a signal to, to the system, and when that battery goes dead, then we can't read the meter, so then the system starts to estimate it.
It started estimating between the February and March reads.
From twenty twenty four?
We're at E starts.
Yep, you got it.
How long was his toilet running, like?
I, I don't know, we can't see, we can't, when it's estimated, we can't see the usage on it, so we don't know when it started.
So when everything got fixed?
How do you, how do you read it then, if it's estimating?
I, I let him replace the node, so then we did this last reading as a current reading, a non-estimated reading.
And the previous estimated reads were based off of the month of the year prior, so in May of twenty twenty four, it estimated, may, it used the same readings that was taken in May of twenty twenty three.
But it was that far off for whatever reason.
Uh huh.
I think I've got what happened, I did get an updated list from Sarah of the ones we can't, she's estimating on, but I've got what happened done. This is the only one that's shown up with this issue, issue so far, hopefully we don't have. Any one we have like this.
But this didn't really have anything to do with your meter, did it?
The meter was reading correctly, you just, you have a leak, his toilet was running. And, but normally when that happens, you know, we're able to see a big jump from month to month and let them know, some, you know, check it, check it out if something's going on, but we weren't able to do that, that estimating.
Well, how did you do it here then?
This, this last month, this last reading is a, is a current reading, so that's the actual.
So that's not an estimate?
No, it's not.
He switched the node out, so then they were able to read it.
It's got, it's got an E on there, but it, that's.
So the E isn't there?
The E, the E is the beginning, so the E would have been the read prior to December twentieth, that would have been for the November twentieth reading.
The December reading is actually.
Oh, yep, yep, that's actual, sorry. When I was copying my Es down, that, that last E shouldn't have been there for the December reading, so that's my fault.
So I know we've had these conversations before, because we had someone earlier in the year who, I think they, their pipe burst or something and they had a very large water bill. And I think their question at that time was, well, had I known it burst, you know, obviously I would have fixed it sooner. Knowing it was on his end, but then there was no way to know or prompt him to say, hey, you're going through an awful lot of water. And so with it being on his end, it, it was nothing that we really could do, so I don't know if this is the same situation, like, can you tell when people are going through a lot of water?
So with our system, we're able to log in and see, there's a water leak report on there, it's not great in my opinion, but it shows us if there's usage for twenty four, continuous for twenty four hours.
Okay.
Which for the most part, this, this time of year would indicate a leak, in the summertime, some people have their garden hoses and stuff up going, so they can use water twenty, twenty, twenty four hours.
Right.
I guess the only one, only thing on this case is had we been, had we actually been able to read it, we might have been able to pick up on this sooner and we would have been able to let them know.
What if the toilet started?
We don't know, so, cause we couldn't see, we can't see, we were only reading the meter.
If the node would have been working, then you would have been able to read it.
Yeah.
Yep, but the node hasn't been working since between February and March's reads.
That leak report requires to go in and then physically check every day or whenever you want, it doesn't send us an alert saying with the twenty four hour usage, we have to go in and then look every single day, so that's, that would record that.
I think.
Do you guys reach out if you've noticed a lot of water?
If I, yeah, if I were to look at that and say, he's been using water for two weeks, all day long, I would try to, at least try to make an attempt to learn that.
Well, I think, I mean.
How do you know if you would have caught this anyway?
I, I don't.
Yeah, that's, that's probably, we don't know.
No, but.
Has it been leaking?
But if, if it had been leaking for three months, you would have noticed a smaller jump from month to month.
Right.
Six months were worth the reading.
Well, it wasn't that, I mean, it's like fifty bucks a month that it went up if you averaged it out over the twelve months, that the node started estimating.
Yeah, if it took a little bit longer.
And even if we asked them to pay it over a year, I mean, that's fifty, sixty bucks a month or more. I think that would be the fair thing to do, that's what we've done in the past, is let them spread it out over time or pay it as they can within a year. I mean, it's somewhat ours, but yet they actually did use the water, so.
I think he'd notice toilet, yeah, running.
You'd be surprised.
Really?
Yeah, you would be surprised.
Living there by himself and toilet in the basement, doesn't mean.
It's not here.
Which, how, this is the street I live on, or?
Across the street from you.
From period.
Right across the street from you.
To the south.
To the south, okay. Oh, yeah.
I think, I don't know, I, I I think, yeah, we're, we're obviously, I think, partially responsible for that.
See, that's, then that's why I'm asking, because.
I, I think we should, because he could have, because obviously if he was paying, although his bill was kind of small up the place, isn't it?
Well, what I'm saying is like you're.
Well, not too much, I guess, a hundred and ten down to sixty, but, you know, obviously he would see, you know, if his bill was seventy dollars one month and it was two hundred and fifty dollars the next month, he'd start seeing something, what's going on here, why is it up this much?
If he was getting an accurate bill every single month, that would have been up to him to notice something, but since we were with an estimated bill.
Yeah, if we would have had, if he would have a two hundred dollar bill for three months in a row, then we could have said, well, you should have known there was something going on there. We didn't know if you used more water.
That's how I'm kind of looking at it.
So this January twenty twenty three date all the way down here where there is no E, that was just estimations before fixing the note?
Where the Es start is where our estimation starts, so those would have been accurate readings.
These are accurate readings.
Yes, and then when the Es start is when the node quit communicating and, you know, your estimating.
Okay.
And the estimations, from what I understand, go off the month, the same month of the prior year.
Yep.
Okay, I was gonna say that they don't look much different.
Cause the, you know, you're, normally people use roughly the same amount of water in the same, same times a year.
Uh huh.
Okay.
It's up to you guys what you want.
I, I think we should just and I'll just for the sake of discussion, I'll make a motion that we just charge into what is normal usage would have been for a month on average, and then, you know, chalk it up as a learning experience, so that we gotta, we gotta do, you know, and like, and the problem is you have that transition, you know, like you said, John, where you know, if John would have been here, that would never have been an estimation for how many months, and if he would have known about it, it would have been an estimation for how much month.
It took me several months to, to even realize what's going on and then another couple of months to.
So, I chalk it up to six hundred or whatever dollar, that learning experience that we have, and it's not like we haven't had them on effort meters in the past too, you know, so. But I'll make a motion that that, I would, I would go with whatever the average is of this normal usage in that month and go with that, that's my motion.
Is there a second?
That's where I get confused, because isn't the, like, the three twenty one, twenty, twenty twenty four date still estimated off of the three twenty twenty three date?
That was my mistake, you're, yeah, cause you're talking about that little E way back here.
Well, so for like, if you're looking at, you know, four one twenty twenty four, and it's fifty five, and the twenty twenty three appears the exact same fifty five, there's no difference in numbers.
Help me out with that reading.
So, like this here is fifty seven eighty on here, right?
Yep.
I don't know why I just do that, but anyway, so up here, same.
Yes.
Okay, so what are we, what are we forgiving or what are we getting charged extra for, I guess, from the date of that year to this year? I guess I'm, that's what I don't understand what we're.
Well, right now, this is just how.
Trying to estimate?
Yep, so this is, this is just how the system over in our office does it when they, when there is estimations, it just duplicates the same amount for the, yeah, that's all it does, so.
And now go to the, the second page?
But he's, hasn't been paid, he hasn't paid it.
He's paid, but now his current bill.
Okay, this is his most current bills.
That's his current bill.
Those estimations, those estimations weren't picking up his.
Yeah. So these are all separate?
Yes.
And this is just one?
Yes.
Uh huh.
Yes.
Very good, yeah.
Thank you. Yep.
But he's been paying his bill every month.
Yes, yep.
So we have a, a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved by Paul, seconded by John, is there any other discussion?
Yes, my thought would be as if it's an error on his side, I don't best I would see is that we would split that over in half, I don't think we should recoup him for everything, it's not totally our fault.
I think he'd be happy with, anything you can help him with, you know, as long as it's, hopefully not stuck with the open, so, however he feels.
I mean, the other thing I see looking at is if these things stop working periodically, is everybody gonna come at us that backup, which isn't required, didn't work?
Do we know when they're not working?
I think, yes, we can see.
Yeah, so we can know when they're not working.
And once I get all, um, once I get current, then we'll, we'll be able to stay, stay it's not working.
So, that's just my two cents, I, I think the fifty fifty split would be more fair.
Well, that's why I said, you know, whether it was a leak toilet or not, it's still water that was used, that's why I feel more fair of splitting it out over the time.
Better bet in a month, than you wondering when I'm telling, what would be this extreme, like.
Right.
Well, you don't know when to start leaking, start leaking last month or eight months.
Right, right.
Yeah, you just don't know.
I don't think it was by this amount, there is no way that it was eight months ago. Because we've had a leaky toilet out at the farm and it was that month, it was that much in one month.
It can be different, it adds up quick. People describe it, a toilet can be a lot down.
Yep.
We've got P and four over twelve months.
So right now, the motion is to pay or to forgive, is there, we can make an amendment or you can vote on the first motion and make a second motion. Jason, you want to amend it to half?
Do you know how many, how many have replaced and how many need to be replaced by chance?
A couple dozen, um, I got a couple dozen left, looks at a whole, hopefully this is the only situation with this, but if it costs, it could, it could be another one.
And that's what I worry about is if we do this for one, we're gonna have to do it for all of them.
Right.
Is there any other discussion? Discussion? Or we can just vote and make a new motion too, so.
I can amend it if you want, you can sure amend it.
You can't.
Just split the difference if that's if you want, if you guys are comfortable with it.
I can't. You can't amend your own motion.
I'll make the amendment then.
To fifty, okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by, amended by Jason, second by Nicole, to amend it to fifty-fifty split, is there any other discussion? On the amendment only, Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Yeah, John?
Jason?
Yes.
Any yes for me, amendment carries, is there any further discussion on the, the main motion that states that we do if homeowner pays fifty-fifty, or we pay fifty, he pays fifty? Any other discussion, John?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yes for me, motion carries.
Okay, so just to make sure that I do the math right, um, do you guys want me to split that seven thirty-nine eighty-five, uh, fifty-fifty? Or did you want me to take off what would have been estimated back in the same timeframe from twenty-three and then take the difference divided fifty-fifty?
I would say the difference.
Difference fifty-fifty.
Okay, sounds good, that's kind of what I was thinking, so, um, fifty-fifty on the water then, after you take off, um, a hundred and three dollars and ten cents from the water, uh, fifty-fifty would be three hundred eighteen dollars and thirty-four cents per party. And then on the sewer, uh, was one twenty-six twenty-three minus twenty-ten from what you would have paid last year, one oh six, fifty-fifty would be fifty-three oh six. So, sound okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, sounds good.
All right.
And that's, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Casey, anything tonight?
A couple things, but I'll be fast.
Okay.
Um, okay, um, there has been a request for a long-term rental here at the Main Street Community Center. Um, a group would like to rent it every single Saturday unless there's something happening that's already scheduled or something that the city needs. Um, every single Saturday from one to possibly eleven o'clock at night, um, for their events. Um, and we thought maybe looking at doing a little bit different rental contract, you know, might be a little bit easier than having them fill out a rental form every single weekend. Um, so we were wondering if you guys would want to have J R write up something for that. Basically looking for your blessing if you did want to allow that, so they've been renting it here since Thanksgiving-ish, since about Thanksgiving, most Saturdays, and they've left it really nice, so they've been pretty respectful.
And they're still willing to pay, it's just, so it's not one, one at a time.
Mm-hmm, and they're happy to pay upfront too, so, yeah, they've been really easy renters.
So they're gonna be, they want to rent this place every Saturday?
Mm-hmm.
From one in the afternoon till eleven o'clock at night?
Mm-hmm.
We can't do that.
What is it that they do?
That's gonna affect things some point, I would think.
Well, they did say they would be.
We don't rent anything, nobody else rents it on Saturdays? I think, I think that's the first thing, we need to look and see how many times has it been rented in the past, unless they're willing, if there's somebody that wants, needs to rent it for something, are they willing not to be there that weekend or?
So right now, they've requested, um, every single Saturday afternoon into evening for this year, um, unless there's already something scheduled here. And they're happy to, um, not rent it if, um, like the city would need it for something or some other large event was typically scheduled, so.
That's a tough one for me.
What is it that they're doing?
Um, it's a religious group.
Oh.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Yep, yep, and they, um, this is one of the most central locations and they, um, yeah, they come in, they rent it, they get the key from us on Friday. Um, we haven't had a problem with them yet, so.
One, one, one P M to eleven, eleven-ish, you think?
Mm-hmm, yep, it's, um, the reason for the lengthy, um, the reason for the lengthy reservation each Saturday is, um, they have, um, you know, uh, whatever events that they have in here, it's based off of the seasons and it's based off the timeframe of, of the sun, um, so, yeah, they appreciate, um, they appreciate the windows in here, um, and they, yeah, it's based off of the seasons, is kind of their big thing, so, so that's the request. And like I said, they've been really good to work with, they, we haven't had any problems with them, so.
You said that they would be willing to give it up if somebody wants to rent it, Saturday, or especially in here.
Sounds like they've been, yeah, they'd be really willing to be pretty flexible, so, and I can maybe have Abby clarify, Abby's been working with them more than I have, so.
I guess for me, if they, if they're willing to, you know, let others rent and other people obviously want to reserve too, um, I guess I don't know why they don't just continue to reserve as they go per month or something, you know? Um, to allow other people, I just don't know if we have a lot of other spaces in town where people can rent. And so it kind of takes away from other people wanting to have events.
That's, that would be my first, I'd be curious as to how many times it's used on Saturday throughout the year. You know, I know hills for days, it's used a lot of times, you know, graduations, it's used a lot of times, we don't always have graduation on Saturday, but some people might. I know we have pancake breakfast on Saturday, so.
Yep.
You know, so there are some times when maybe a conflict, but, uh, you know, that would be my only concern, I'd hate to just say, you know, they're gonna use it every, and I, how you would define that, that's the question maybe Abby's gotta ask, is find out how many times it is rented by other people throughout the year on a Saturday and then figure out how we can define like, for example, like H B pancake or if somebody's got something on, how, how flexible are they gonna be for those things?
I would say any, if you're gonna go that road, any city community group or any city resident would have, because that's kind of how we've. Done in the past as far as whether they have to pay or not, that's always been, if you're a resident, you get it at a different than non-resident.
Okay, so I'll come back with more clarification at the next meeting?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Anything else?
Yes, I only have three more things, um, so a friendly reminder, interviews are on Wednesday and on Friday for the Public Works Laborer. Um, Paul's gonna sit in on those, um, Nicole's offered to sit in on Friday, um, if we need another commissioner. All our supervisors at Public Works are gonna sit in on them, um, if there's anybody else that wants to sit in, um, there's a two on Wednesday, one at one-thirty, one at four-thirty, and then we're still picking a time for the Friday one, um, it's just in the morning, so, um, there's that. Um, Nicole and Jason were kind enough to hang out with Zach, Roy, Jay and myself to discuss the overtime rule. Um, and Nicole's gonna come up with, um, a nice scenario sheet, um, that'll kind of help guide all of our employees to know when overtime is applicable, um, and able to be paid out, um, and discuss the call-out time um, and all that kind of good stuff, so, um.
But we did have questions that were asked, um, of them that, um, we wanted to pass here. Holidays was a discussion, um, since sometimes they do end up working a holiday, the question was asked if they could have an option of double time on a holiday, because that is something that can be given, um, or take that holiday and use it as a floater within the same paid period. So if they were, because like snow, if they, they had to work a holiday, like, let's say they had to work Christmas, but they either have the option of double time on that day, or take that day and use it as a different regular paid day off within the paid period. So that was one question that was brought up that, um, can be discussed. Or if you want it, you work it, you get paid time and a half, and that's it, so, but that was, that's not in our, you know, in our handbook, and so that was a discussion.
What do you guys conclude?
Well, my understanding is that now if they come in on holiday, they pay their holiday hours plus, so basically it's the same thing.
Like, yeah, they get time and a half on their holiday, that's, that's kind of a normal rule. Um, but it was a good question too of, well, if I have to work the holiday though, can I maybe get double, can I take the double time instead? Because if you float the holiday, you get time and a half here and you get regular time here. Most of the time in, in places that I've seen, you get time and a half and you work the holiday or you don't work the holiday and just get regular time, but, um, I, I don't, this would be certain situations where they're kind of, don't really have a choice when it comes to weather, so. But we thought we would ask you guys what you thought here.
Basically, it'd just be adding in the option that they could float the holiday.
Float it or?
Like Jay brought up, which was a good, I mean, we're allowed to do it the same way, but if I'd rather still take my holiday a different day to have that extra day off, because some people want the extra pay and don't care about the time off, some people want the time off, especially if it's maybe summertime or late time, and then that way they could take the holiday on a Friday and go to the lake longer and be just paying for their overtime on, that's what they worked, it breaks out for the same cost for us.
Right.
It's the same cost, but it's the same amount of hours worked?
Well, we didn't take that out, did we?
Holidays have always been time and a half, that's just a regular departmental labor.
No, but, uh, did we take out if you had overtime, you banked that with commission approval?
And for the five days of vacation?
Yeah.
That's still in there, I think it's page twenty-one, I think.
Okay, that's what I thought, so technically that is in.
Oh, my gosh.
So technically then that is already in play, they, if they got paid overtime, they could use, they have to come to the commission.
So they can bank the hours not, okay, so they can bank the hours up to so much by the end of the year?
Up to five days, overtime may be traded for vacation days up to five days. So if they work eight hours at time and a half, they get one and a half days of time off, vacation time.
Oh, that gets banked, okay, I get it, I get it.
But it's just gotta come, um, for approval that you want to do that. And it has to be used then within the calendar year.
Within the calendar year, okay.
So, but see this way.
So you get more time to use it.
Yeah.
It's not bad, okay.
But then they don't get paid that time and a half for that holiday?
If they work, if they do.
Because they're getting time and a half, they're not getting paid time and a half, they're getting one and a half hours.
Right.
So you get paid, instead of, if you work eight hours, you actually get six or, uh, twelve hours of time off.
Right. So that he's saying more get banked, it's a little more flexible.
Overtime that week because he got those twelve hours, right.
Okay.
So technically it's already in there.
There, you didn't read it that way. Um, the other question too was birthdays, some of them had a question if maybe they could, even if their birthday was on a Tuesday, could they maybe have their day off on a Friday instead? So I don't, I don't know how you guys feel about that for changing out birthdays, but it was a question of, well, maybe I don't want to take a day off on a Tuesday on my birthday, maybe I have plans on Friday. And I didn't see that anymore.
There is.
Just as they get a day off, but.
Unless it's on the weekend, then I think they get, then it's the next day.
I guess in the past, we've always treated it as a floor, whether it was in the, a mucker house, that's, that's what we've done.
Was it within, uh, two years or just whenever by year end?
By the year, I think, that's.
But unfortunately, we got abused.
Okay.
And that's where we have to go back to the policy. Because that's where we ended up with some with, ended up paying out quite a bit, so.
Excuse me, what page is that on?
I think twenty-five, but I care.
We want to know for sure.
Oh, gosh.
Now you're just guessing.
Now, we're making sure you're showing that.
She's gonna have tabs in that handbook just like this.
You just watch.
It's easy to.
It'll be sectioned out by. Okay, he's, because you what? Poor finger brain problem.
I, yeah, H R is, I'm trying to make it my new best friend, but. When it works right, it is, yeah.
A lot of yes you can, but you can't.
No, it just says on the birthday.
Right. Was it page twenty-five?
It was.
Two for two.
All right, now, now it's a challenge.
That's all I know.
He's gonna ask me any more questions. Hey, do you want to bring it back?
But it's, so if you read it as holiday time, then we say if the holiday time falls on a weekend, then you get it the next. Um, where is it?
Oh, that holiday falls on a Saturday.
Right, because we're treating the birthday as a holiday, so, so if your birthday falls on a Saturday, you get it on Friday and if it falls on a Sunday, you get it on Monday.
Oh, yeah, okay, so it's treated like, yeah, okay.
Unless we want to change it, that'd be the, but I would suggest not changing it, we just finished, let's look at it when we go again. It's just my suggestion, if you're wondering, we got another touchdown.
Okay, is there something to think about?
My question is trailer.
Probably.
Probably.
Probably. So it's twenty to three if you're curious, twelve seconds left in the second round, or the first round.
Then the, the last one I can think of is the, so we've got Casey as exempt, we've got the office, and then we've got Public Works. Um, the question has been, and I did call about this one, and there is no North Florida law in place for minimum hours worked, it's whatever the employer, um, determines, and our handbook says that the employees are to work the full-time hours of forty a week. Does anyone have any different opinion on anything less than that? That was kind of our conversation, that it's been an issue in the past if it was set at thirty-two or thirty-five and some only worked that, took the rest of the hours off, which leaned on the rest of the staff to do their work. So in the handbook, it says forty, but it doesn't specifically say forty for Public Works or forty for City Hall workers, and then maybe we need to define that.
Well, we kind of defined it at the last meeting where you said you had to have an average of thirty hours worked, was it thirty?
That was the discussion, yeah.
Yeah.
It was the discussion, but it wasn't, we didn't know if that was the thing, so when I, like, called, um, North Florida doesn't have any minimum, it's up to the employer. So do we establish Public Works different than City workers, or is it forty across the board?
If we haven't hired for a forty-hour week, why aren't we, why aren't we working a forty-hour week?
Right.
That's what you are hired for, because I, the point you'd kind of made a little bit there was, well, if you're not there for forty hours, somebody else. well, if you're not there for forty hours, somebody else is doing your work.
Right.
Then is that fair?
Right.
And would it be abused? So I think if you're hired for forty hours, you know, under, I guess you can have circumstances where that might not work, but, uh, that could also be brought to us, too, I guess, and we could make a judgment call there if we needed to, better. And this is just my opinion, but if you're hired, if you're hired for forty hours a week, if you're physically capable of being there, you should be there.
If I remember correctly, to a handbook, it does say the City Hall's hours versus Public Works hours, if I remember correctly.
It does. I couldn't tell you, I just have that memorized, I don't have it memorized in there.
I'm gonna take a stab, thirty-two. I just like that number.
Thirty-three. Do I hear thirty-four?
No, that's not the score of the game.
Yeah, it is in there, and it even states, like, when we switch over to summer hours for City Hall.
I do remember reading that.
Yep.
'Cause the only question we had was whether they keep their benefits, correct?
Uh, yes.
Mm-hmm.
That was one, that was why that hour was brought up.
So if there is no minimum, do we keep it at forty and say?
Well, you have, you have vacation, right, and sick days and things.
Right, and if you add extenuating circumstances, we have bereavement pay, we have bereavement time off, we have, uh, leave of absence.
But that's the way I look at it, I look at it, if you're not there, somebody else has to do your work, and that's that's not always good for morale.
So we'll leave it as is then? For now, and if we have-
Yeah, we always reevaluate this.
We reevaluate every year, so we'll keep that in mind. But that does help with our, um, although we have clarification, so anything moving forward?
Anything on this?
You give a time? Do you give a time?
Uh, the other one Casey brought up, and it is in here, so any other, does say holidays, and we have it here, any other day appointed by the President of the United States or Governor of the State of North Dakota, so the President didn't appoint Thursday as a holiday. So Thursday would be closed, correct? Okay.
I'll do it.
You're gonna give a report to our, to our work report.
What report?
It's a holiday, you guys can pay me time and a half for working a holiday.
You get holiday pay for?
I mean, I wonder if I do, I think it's on our agenda tomorrow, too, actually.
All right.
Onwards and forwards.
Onwards and forwards.
Okay, that was the last, you actually covered the last thing on mine, so I'm done.
Well, that was part of the policy manual, so.
Oh, perfect, there we go, all done, I'm good.
All right, uh, anything special from the sheriff's office tonight?
No, um, I haven't talked to Steve in a little bit.
Okay. Uh, number six. Are, I got a phone call, several phone calls. Um, I told them to call the office, I don't know if they did or not.
I haven't taken, on the dog discussion?
No.
No?
Um, beefs, beautification. But, um, our very first and our very long property, which is at one oh-three Fourth Street Northeast. The resident next door called and talked to me and asked about what could they do to get things cleaned up, I said you need to go to the Sheriff's Department if that person is on your property and has stuff, so that that side can move forward. Um, she said she was gonna do that, she called me again today and asking if I knew of anybody that would help clean up, and I gave her Rowan Joe, the one that we were going to use previously. Uh, and the other thing that was admitted is that there is two people living in the camper in their backyard, or in her backyard.
If they haven't called the city or the Sheriff's Department, there's not a lot we can do about.
Right, so, but I'm just giving you information on that, so.
That was a heated discussion.
All right, uh, dog discussion, we did, it's not finalized, um, but I don't know if they were off today, or that person might have been off, but the West Fargo Animal Hospital, they were working back and forth trying to come up with something, so. There's still discussion there, um, and once we get more firm, then I'll bring Steve in, and so we can work through on that as well, and Jason.
Is there anything apart from the mirrors together?
I haven't heard anything yet, but from Steve, so I'm gonna try to do something this week.
I'll touch, I'll try to touch base with him on that, if he has something I know.
I haven't seen anything, anyway. Um, next item is the transfers. Is there any questions on that, otherwise, do you have, we just need a motion to approve those transfers. If we make it quick, we can get done before halftime's over.
We don't, we don't need Casey to go over these, 'cause I, um, we don't, um-
We went over them, this is just finalized, all the-
That's the same from the last meeting, that you wrote down on the sheet.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll make the motion paper for transfers.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Probably moved and seconded by Nicole, seconded by Paul, any other discussion? John?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any yes for me, motion carries.
So we see these in February, then, or will they all be here, or see them, or even at the end of January?
January.
At the end of January, so we'll see them on the next?
Yep, you'll see them in the January financials. Yep.
Um, we probably should mention that audit, I forgot about that. Uh, the one thing I forgot, this reminded me, but Casey told me today, and, um, so, we are having a secondary audit that we have to do, Ibeely's gonna help us with it, it's for the USDA loans. So it's a little separate than what we had, but, um, we should be thankful for Casey, 'cause she's getting things, everything figured out, there was a lot of stuff that is missing that needs to get straightened out on that side of it, so, that was previously not done, so, or missed. So you might see, if you see an added expense on that, it's because of that, of our USDA loans that we've done.
I'm hoping it won't be too much, since it's within, within the same year that we were currently getting audited for anyways, so. And USDA, it was supposed to have been done already, and it just, I didn't know about it, so we just
I had, this is the first that I have heard about it, so, yeah, was something that we should have, but we didn't, so not sure what happened. Um, the phone app renewal conversation?
Yep, um, so this is, this was tabled from the last meeting, um, your guys' current phone app is not going, going to be offered for free anymore. Um, my assumption is that grants aren't gonna be covering it, um, so if you guys want to keep this app, um, it will be seven hundred and fifty dollars a year, um, that billing period will start in February, and the bill will be due in April. Um, so, uh, it was requested of me to send out, um, kinda the stats of your guys' app last meeting, you guys all should have gotten that, um, in an email not shortly after our last meeting. Um, I think at that time, there was maybe five hundred and thirty people that used the app, um, so I don't know if you guys wanna keep it, do you want me to do research on a new app, what would you guys like?
Well, you had mentioned, like, if Tyler Technologies would have something integrated in when it comes, right? Um, I, I never could get the app to work, so I've never used it, I can't really put any or I loved it or hated it kind of feedback in there, with five hundred and ninety-two, that isn't very much.
Well, that's download, that's not act, not active users.
Yeah, so, but I don't know how many out of those downloads are active from those five hundred and two's, is what I'm saying.
Three and four, app opens, three and four times it was opened by people in the last three days.
Yep, and we try not to use it too, you know, just often enough, so it's not nuisance some, you know, um, you know, if there's a notice that needs to go out real quick, you know, of some things, if there's an outage or whatever, whatever it may be, then we'll kinda use it, but.
The ones that I, that you look at on the app uses, so if you look at November, the screen views between November seventeenth and twenty-first, that's when our garbage was, our recycling was, and that was the highest, and we didn't hit a hundred and fifty, so it's a hundred and fif, less than a hundred and fifty people are using it, I would guess.
What would you guys think of just letting the phone app go and bringing Tyler, once Tyler comes on board, leave?
I'd rather keep it until we have something else in place, myself.
We have just two years.
I know, but I still, it's gonna take us a while to get Tyler Tech, you're not gonna have that, when's that gonna be all the money?
As long as we stay on schedule with everything, we should hopefully have it up and running within the next six or seven months.
So that's already a happy year, you know, so. I, I, I think we should have something out there, and this is something that obviously some people are using, and we're not even pushing this hard. You know, we're not really pushing it real hard, you know, so.
But there is also, um, Facebook that they use, and, and Instagram.
Board, why are we not using that, then, for like, hey, garbage day is da-da-da, like, instead of-
Yeah, but this goes right to your phone, you know, I know you said yours doesn't work, but I, I like them, I, I think they're great, I like all the reports you get.
Well, and if we want, I mean, if you want texting in the meantime, we can, we have that capability in the office, we just have to get numbers to do it, so, people aren't signed up for it.
Is this, um, you might know this, Paul, is this, um, app, like, part of the, the welcome package or anything, or anywhere where people do know about the app?
Yeah, they know, it's put in the welcome packets, but we maybe, if we hand out ten a year, that's a lot. We, people just don't come and get them, you know, but that information is in there. Isn't that little deal that Abby put together with all the information that you wanna know?
I've never seen that.
You should have got one, we all got one here at City Hall, one of our meetings, pretty sure she gave a copy to everybody, didn't she?
I can't remember.
But it might have been before.
I think it was before me.
Maybe you need to give them out again, Paul.
What's that?
Maybe you need to give them out again.
Uh, well, she's just gonna update it now, I just talked to her about updating it, first, for raids and everything, you know?
Okay.
'Cause it has rates and all that stuff on it, so.
Well, do I have a motion to keep it, otherwise, we won't renew?
I'll make a motion to prove it, or to keep it.
For a year?
Something in place.
Okay, is there a second?
I know it's a year, but.
Second?
I'll second it.
Moved by Paul, seconded by John, is there any other discussion? John?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Yes for me, motion carries. Uh, next item under new business is the raffle permit.
Yep, um, you guys should have a copy, it's the Hillsborough Dollars for Scholars, um, they just brought it in today, but they typically do this same raffle every single year.
I have a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion approve.
Nicole makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jason, any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Next item is the Missouri M R E S resolution, this is a yearly thing that we generally do. If you have any questions, sure to ask, but basically, it's, it's pretty standard every year.
Yep, um, last year, when you guys did this, um, I was appointed as the representative, and then, um, Levi was appointed as the alternate. Um, do you guys wanna keep that, or do you wanna change it up?
I'm fine with that, I'm fine with that.
I'm good with that.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve the resolution?
Make a motion to approve the resolution to keep the same signers as we had last year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Nicole, any other discussion? John?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any yes for me, motion carries. It's up to you if you wanna say anything, all right? We're closed on M L, Martin Luther King Day, and on Thursday in the office, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye. Meeting is adjourned.
Did you get kicked, or?
No, this is the way I walk now.